It's given Debbie a minute, so. But I guess we can just get into it right now and maybe they'll log on. All right, so this is the Planning Board Public Meeting, Tuesday, November 3, 2020. It's approximately 7:35 PM right now. This is a virtual online public meeting. For the duration of the coronavirus health emergency, Village Hall is closed to the public, and meetings are held with participants at remote locations, connecting to conferencing software provided by zoom.us. Members of the public are invited to view meetings live using the Zoom client, which also allows them to raise a hand and contribute with voice and video when they are invited during public portions of the meeting. Okay, so the meeting is called the Order Statement of Compliance in accordance with the provisions of Section 10:4-8D of the Open Public Meetings Act. The date, location, and time of the commencement of this meeting is reflected in a meeting notice, a copy of which schedule has been filed with the village manager and the village clerk, Ridgewood News and the Record Newspapers, and posted on the bulletin board in the entry lobby of the village municipal offices at 131 North Maple Avenue on the village website site in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Okay, flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the and to the republic for which it stands. Okay, Jane Roll call.
Mayor Newtonson?
Here.
Chief Endor?
Here.
Council on Homeholds?
Here.
Mr. Joel?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Pateri?
Who Ben?
Here.
Ms. Bartow? Ms. Wesner?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Lebarsky?
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is public comments on topics not pending before the board. Do we have any hands raised?
So, can I just ask a quick?
Yeah, sure.
This is a really bad echo.
Yeah, I hear it.
All right. So, before we start, because I see there's 27 or so participants, do we want to just explain all those emails that we received? And I don't know if it's something that Chris Martin can review as to why I forwarded those to Jane and copied council and chairman, but maybe Chris Martin just wants to explain the reason that we can't actually respond to those.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In terms of any kind of letter or email submissions, an applicant has the right to, under the Sixth Amendment, to confront the individuals who are making statements that may be adverse to the application or quite frankly, inferior to the application, and objectors have the same rights that are present. So, the hearing cannot be done by telephone. It cannot be done in terms of any kind of correspondence that is not officially through the Zoom program or the phone numbers that are being done tonight. So, those emails unfortunately are correspondence, and without being there for questioning and further elaboration, discussion, and elaborating on a full record, they cannot be considered for voting purposes in terms of the application that is being presented. So, they should be acknowledged and put in correspondence.
And then just a quick question I have, Chris, because we had new, I'm just trying to pull it up on my screen, so if you'd just give me a second. Hang on, let me just at least find. So, we just reviewed the new regulations for virtual meeting requirements. I don't know if you and Jane received those. I don't know if Richard Joel received those.
From the DCA, from the DCA, yes.
Yeah, so does that, is that relevant to any of this?
It would be if the person had called in or been part of a Zoom as to the application, and it would be if the application was such that the board made a decision that it was not able to go forward with it. But obviously, we're not only, the board is not only going forward, we're on our subsequent hearing date, so it's continuing. Unfortunately, the same rules apply to individuals not participating virtual.
Okay, and then finally, are those regulations something that we should have circulated for our next meeting so that everyone is familiarized with those?
Absolutely, and my suggestion is that the chair, I believe he's already reviewed them, but, you know, be sure that they're something that he determines are ready to be moved forward at this point, and I'd love to assist in that regard as well with Jane.
Thank you.
Okay. Question, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So, Mayor Newtonson, did you say you forwarded those emails to the planning board members?
No, I did not say I forwarded them to all planning board members. I took any, first, I realized that a whole bunch of people had Chairman Joel's email incorrect, his email is not, he does not have an official Ridgewood email, and so many of the email, emails went to the wrong email address. They were addressed to both myself and Richard Joel, and I forwarded all of those to Richard Joel's correct address, our legal counsel, and our secretary, just so everyone had them at least on record in the absence of my, and I just did not respond to any because just kind of knowing the ropes, we don't respond to those, just acknowledging.
All right, thanks.
They've been acknowledged through the, through the forward that they were received, but.
You have two public comments.
I just want to add to Chris's comments. Chris, public persons are able to participate either through public testimony section or public comment section during the application, so there will be a time where that they can make comments through the Zoom meeting.
If, if they were present chairman, that's exactly right, and I just want to commend the mayor, she did exactly what's supposed to be done. Lorraine, it was a good question, but they're not supposed to be considered by the board, but they're supposed to be acknowledged that they did, they're actually received by the board, and it goes to this depository, which is the secretary. So, they're there, and you need, if anybody wants to take a look at them, they're, they're able to look at them, but the board cannot consider them in terms of this application. Now, the chair is right, there's a comment section for the application, not in general comments. So, if anything deals with general comments that I think we're up to on this agenda, at this point, those comments should not be taken by the chair at this point, they should be wait for the application. There's also, the public has the ability to present evidence, that's a different section, that they're entitled to present, you know, substantial evidence in terms of their own testimony, experts under oath, not just comments. So, they, they have an opportunity to be heard in those two regards, but they have to participate either live, which we're not doing, by Zoom, which we're doing, and Zoom allows access by telephone.
Okay. I thought that the rules for Zoom that we looked at the other day at the council meeting allowed for members of the public to send in emails that could be read at the meeting that night.
Through the Zoom platform.
Okay, so the emails that they sent in, can they be read or no?
The emails can't be considered. They're in, they're, they're with the secretary, but an applicant or an objector or anybody who's participating in the formal hearing has a right to elaborate, expand upon, object to, examine, and cross-examine, and you can't do that with a cold piece of paper, whether it be email or regular mail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But if there's interaction with chat or instant message and the individual can participate live at the meeting like that, the DCA appears to have allowed a little flexibility in that regard.
Okay, Debbie Pater has joined us. It's about 7:45. There was two raised hands still in?
Now, there's just one.
Okay.
Oh, not two, I got two again. I'll call on the first one.
Yeah, sure.
Eileen O'Malley? You need to unmute.
McNulty?
McNulty, O'Malley.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello? Hello? Hi, my name is Eileen McNulty. Okay, can you hear me? My name is Eileen McNulty O'Malley, and I live on Cedar Ave, and I really don't want the project to go through. I don't think the revenue collected will really go out to anything but the services.
Okay, Eileen, there's, the application is, is on the schedule for tonight, so.
Well, if in fact it does go through, yeah, okay, I want to know how this is going to affect my property value and the timeframe of the project, and I'm concerned because there's multiple family dwellings on this block on Cedar Ave, and there's usually only one driveway, the parking issues.
Eileen, this is for public comments on topics. Okay, Eileen, this is for public comments for topics not pending before the board, so these are other matters. When the application comes forward. What's that?
I am concerned about these issues because we have COVID, and we have, we have issues with COVID and isolating and all these things, and we can't just go to people's houses to the neighbor and say, I'm going to hang out here for a while. We can't do that, we got isolated home. I'm a nurse, I have to be accessing 24/7, you know, in and out of the driveway. I can't be worrying about like where I'm going to go, and it's freezing outside, can't go to a restaurant and hang out, you gotta go home, you gotta go home.
Eileen, we have a certain protocol for an application, so at the appropriate time, you can do public comment for the application.
Also, like, my tenants, I might even lose them with all this noise and garbage going on, and what's that pollution thing we're talking about? It sounds terrible.
Okay, Eileen, you'll be able to voice public comment on the application at the appropriate time. Okay, thank you.
At what time? I was, I was told I would get a link to this, and I never got the link, so I don't know what you're talking about, I get information, I get no information, I get something in the mailbox saying, you know, hook up with the internet thing, and I mean, that's it, like, you know, get any information. At 7:30, you're allowed to, like, it doesn't make any sense.
Suggestion, just as a suggestion.
Just send me something in the mail, please.
Eileen, 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 this is Mayor Newtonson, how are you this evening? Just as a suggestion, I think it might be, it might be helpful for the chairman, he's going to just review the exact process so that you'll know exactly when your opportunity is to comment and/or ask questions. So, we're just going to review that process now, and this way everyone is on the same page, and we can proceed in an orderly manner. Sorry, Richard.
That's okay. What the process is for an application, the attorney for the applicant comes forward, presents the case, will present witnesses to provide testimony. That witness is able to be cross-examined by the board, the board professionals, and the public, and that'll go in sequence. Whenever they have a witness, they keep presenting witnesses, either an engineer, planner, or other witness, until they're done, and when they're done, we are able to have board experts testify, and they're able to be crossed, and then if there's any objectors or counsel, then also they can present witnesses on it. After that is done, there's a public testimony section where a person for the public can testify if they have personal knowledge regarding facts that are relevant to the application. That person will also be subject to cross-examination by the board, the board professionals, the applicant, and by the public, and after that's done, if there's any rebuttal by the applicant, there might be additional witnesses. If not, then it'll move into the summation stage where we will have public comments, that's when anyone can come forward and make a statement regarding the application, voicing their concerns, and then after that's done, all the people from the public make their comments, then the applicant's able to make a closing statement, and at that point, there will be a motion to close the hearing, and then the board will deliberate and make a motion and then vote on it. So, it has to be taken in a very specific sequence to keep order for the application. If you just had just a bunch of people coming in and, you know, just talking, people would be talking over each other. So, this is similar to almost like a court process, but it's has to be an orderly presentation of the evidence for it. So, it respects the applicant, it respects the witnesses, and it also respects the public. So, it's a fair and open process, all the evidence is presented, everyone gets an opportunity to be heard, and then the board will review the matter and deliberate on it. Chris, did you have anything to add to that, or?
You still hear me?
Yes.
Miss McNulty?
I'm sorry?
Ms. McNulty? It's Chris Martin, the attorney, I just wanted to.
I just saw in a letter that we weren't able to talk last time, so it was sort of upsetting that nobody got heard, so I thought maybe I'd tell it.
No, no, no.
It's affecting our street, I don't know why.
Miss McNulty? Okay, can you just, let me, let me just, for a second, I'm, I'm trying to help. I believe, and chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, on the village's website, there was, there's access to a Zoom link that can get Ms. McNulty O'Malley into the meeting as part of the Zoom meeting, is that correct?
That's what I just did to get on here, but I went to the town hall yesterday. And that you didn't get the link right away.
Hang on a second, I got a question to the chair. Chairman, if somebody was looking to get the link, maybe Jane, can they go on the website and get onto the link?
Yes, the, the agenda is there, and then I've sent it to anyone who asked for it.
Perfect. Now, Ms. O'Malley, if you can go on to the village website and click on the Zoom link for this planning board meeting, you'll be able to not only participate by phone, which you can do, but you could also see the witnesses and some of the evidence and, and have a better idea of what they're presenting, if you're so inclined to do that. That was my suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, I just didn't want it to go through, and that's all I can say, thanks. I'll listen.
More at the time of the application.
Yeah, and just also, I mean, you should monitor all the meetings that this application's discussed, also check the, the planning board website where the agendas are posted, and that'll show you what's on the agenda for that meeting. So, you just monitor it, because this isn't a short application where it's just done in one meeting, and last me, the last meeting that we had that handled this application, we only had one witness, so, and there wasn't even opportunity for cross-examination because that one witness took a long time for testimony. So, it, it can be a long process, but it has to go in an orderly fashion to keep it on track.
Can I just, I wanted to add one thing, if you don't mind, Richard?
Yeah, sure.
I, I just wanted to say that, that just to anyone who's out there in the audience, and actually even to our new planning board members, the one thing I can attest to is that Chairman Joel never misses a beat and certainly takes the time to prompt participants as when it's their opportunity to speak, when it's their opportunity to ask questions, cross-examine the witness. So, I think, and I just want everyone to know that, that, that the chairman is on this, and he's, he's not going to let any of the members of the public who want to participate be left unheard, so I, I know that that's just his, you know, his approach to this, so he's very cognizant of your presence.
Okay, did you have any questions, Eileen?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, was there any other?
I'm showing no others.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to committee commission professional updates for non-agenda topics. Do we have anyone to report? Okay, seeing there's none. Correspondence received by the board?
No. Am I supposed to address each one of these, or just in general?
Indicate that we received emails, and we already discussed how.
Okay, yes, I have received several emails in regards to this application, to the upper Ridge application, and I, with the ones I get, I respond to them and tell them that they need to join the meeting, and I give the information, join the meeting, and that they would have an opportunity then.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jane. All right, our third item on the agenda is review of ordinances. It's ordinance 3816, ordinance amending the land use ordinance to amend Chapter 190 to require an affordable housing set aside consistent with the adopted 2020 third round housing element and fair share plan. Beth, were you gonna, I mean, not Beth, I mean, Mary Ann, were you going to present this, or did we want Chris? This is a.
You're muted.
So, I, I can, I can go through the overview of it. I, I thought that Beth was, Beth wrote it, I thought was going to present it, but if she is not here, I can present it because I am familiar with the affordable housing ordinances.
Okay, and you can reference facts, because Beth did present to us as a board on it.
She did, she spoke about each one of these ordinances when she was presenting the fair share plan, and, and you adopted the fair share plan with the discussion of these ordinances moving forward as a follow-up. Part of, as part of the, as part of the settlement, there were certain requirements that would need to be put in place following the settlement. One was the adoption of a fair share plan that met all the standards of UHAC and the affordable housing state regulations, and, and how to meet the, the fair share numbers. Certain locations were identified where projects could take place or have taken place, and that was all incorporated into the fair share plan. So, these three, these, these ordinances implement that, that, that framework, and that framework was adopted in the fair share plan and also the housing element of the master plan. That's what the fair share plan is. The, the first ordinance is standard, every settlement that's made with Fair Share Housing Center requires that a, a set aside ordinance be adopted. Basically, that is, that is that any project that has five units or more will be required to comply with the affordable housing requirements and incorporate 15% affordable units and 20%, or 15% for rental and 20% for ownership, and this, this applies across the board in any zone in anywhere with, within the village, and that is a standard ordinance. It's, I've seen it adopted all, all over the state.
Mary Ann, I noticed on the first page of 3816, it had 20% set aside for rentals. I thought it was 15% on that.
It should be, and it should be 15, it should be 20 for, excuse me, 15 for rentals and 20 for ownership.
Do you see that, where it has 20 for the rental?
Projects.
It said A1. The.
A1.
Third line from the bottom of the, of section one there.
Or preferred for rent. Oh, yeah, that is a typo. Thank you, that definitely, that definitely should be 15%. I, I didn't, I assumed that this was the standard. No, it's 15% for rental and 20% for ownership, and that's, that would not have been a unique thing in the settlement, that would have been, that would have came up in the discussions in the fair share plan, so.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was a typo. And you, can you just explain the process for the board members, how it comes from the council to us for a review?
Okay. So, first, for just, it, it's like any other land use ordinance or any other ordinance where it goes to first reading for council, and then to the planning board for comment and recommendation, and then it goes back to the council for second reading, and they can choose to accept, reject, or make any of the recommendations that you passed along.
Mary Ann, this one is also this ordinance 16, it's either missing section two, or the numbers are a little off on the second page.
So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
And then it jumps to section 3.
Section 1, section 3, I agree with you, I see that. I only have what you have, so I don't have section 2. I assume that we can recommend that they be renumbered.
Section 2 is there.
Well, I think it's adding to the code, it might not be deleting the whole thing.
Um, this, it's possible, but this should be a new section.
Okay.
I, I think it reads as a new section, it's a new set aside requirement, however, that might, that might not be, that might be the case.
Yeah, I think that's the way it was written, Mary Ann, that it's just changes or additions to sections. But that, that should just be clarified, simply put, we're not at the stage where there was testimony, there was hearing, it was approved by the board in terms of the board's jurisdiction over the housing element of the master plan. These were then, after approval of the master plan, as you know, Mary Ann, it goes up to the, the village council. The governing body then formulates the ordinances consistent with the master plan and the housing element, come down to the board for comment, so that certainly should be a comment, just to confirm with the governing body that that's how we're reading it, that's how I were reading it, that's why I didn't raise it before. And secondarily, as, as you correctly pointed out, Mary Ann, 15% for rental, 20% for condominium or ownership is the norm. As you both, as you know, though, we've seen settlements where they have different numbers, so just to confirm that those numbers are correct, we can ask that as well, Chair. I also noticed the typo in 3818, but we're not there yet, so, go ahead, Mary Ann.
So, the, the, the next, the next ordinance is to establish a H3 zone, and it provides the locations where this new zone would go, block 4704, lots 6.01, 7.04, 15. They're very specific locations, and the standards for this zone will allow for graduated density with a maximum of 18 dwelling units per acre. It's pretty basic and pretty standard for mixed-use buildings and multifamily buildings, rather, excuse me, multifamily buildings, the next one is mixed-use buildings.
This is very advantageous for the community.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think, and Mary Ann, you'd agree with me, the density of 15 is very good. It, it's beneficial to the village.
It is, I, I don't think it's very high. I think it's still a relatively low density. If you can think about it this way, a two-family house on a 25 by 100 lot, which is standard in, in some urban suburbs, is 32 units an acre. So, this is much less than that, but this is what's been accepted and, and around the state for affordable housing zoning, and, and so you're complying with the settlement agreement and incorporating affordable housing zones to encourage projects that meet the numbers that you agreed to and that are set forth in the fair share plan. And, you know, so then, and then further, which I can talk about as well, the standards that are in these plans are very basic. There's bulk standards, there's density, there's height, and there's affordable controls. There's not a lot of information on facade and design. There's some, but not a whole lot, and that, that kind of information can always be added at a future time, if you've, when, and when you have more time to, to do it. Basically, these ordinances, just implementing the affordable housing components, were necessary to, to meet the commitments of the settlement, and so it's important that you move forward with these right away, and you can always incorporate improvements to design and other features that you find might be more suitable to the village, keeping those densities and making sure that the affordable housing projects that were contemplated in the fair share plan can still be achieved, but you can still go forward with making the standards more tailored to the village and the village design criteria. So the next thing is the, the next ordinance is the amending the B1 and B2 to allow for residential units above. And that is also another typical affordable housing ordinance amendment in many of the settlements that I've seen across the state.
Just Mary Ann at the top, I mean, the Chair can note this as well and just look for the letter. Jane, the top part of the ordinance of 3818, where it describes an ordinance amending the land use ordinance. The second line, after land use and development, I think there's some just typos there that need to be cleaned up.
Okay.
So it's the second line at the top of the caption, you know, of the heading of the ordinance.
It says to add, amend, should be to amend the B1 and B2 districts. That's what it should be.
Exactly.
And the density here is 18 units an acre. It does allow a height of 50 feet. I noticed that as I was reading through. And the third ordinance is basically the incorporation of the UHAC standards and the affordable housing standards of the state and replacing the old growth share standards that, that were used prior to, to the court settlement approach that the state has been moving into in the last several years. What, what's also, what's also incorporated in this ordinance is the creation of a B3 district. And the B3 district zone encourages mixed-use buildings. And the mixed-use buildings that encourages with retail and residential and at maximum, it's also a graduated density, going from 12 units an acre to, on point, 25 acres, up to 20 units an acre on projects that are on over acre in size. So that's the, that's a, that's a brief overview of these ordinance. As I said, the ordinances themselves meet the requirements of the settlement agreement. And the village has, has the ability to tailor them even further and make sure that the development that's permitted under them meets all the design specs that you'd like to see. But there really, there isn't any other choice at this point in time to make changes to some of these because these specific ordinances, right now, were tailored to achieve the developments that are outlined in the Fair Share Plan. So I, at this point, this is basically the follow-up on what was already adopted and agreed to in the Fair Share Plan.
No, Mary.
You can elaborate on that, but I believe that's, that's essentially what this is. But I don't want you to feel as though you're stuck with only this because you can, there is, there is, there is some leeway in any, any ordinance that can, as far as design goes, that can be, that can be looked at. But the, the actual zoning locations and the creation of these zones was something that was agreed to already.
No, that's an excellent summary. In terms of other ordinances in the community that deal with other planning and design and aspects of the municipal land use law, everything you just described, a lot of them are on the books. This is basically to memorialize the numbers dealing with the affordable housing requirements of this particular community. And I think the mayor, the council, and Matt Rogers, as the attorney, did a great job with this. I mean, I remember a few years ago, and Susan might remember this, some people were advocating for numbers in the 30s. And you heard 15 density up to a maximum of 20 only, only if it's over an acre. This complies with the Mount Laurel Doctrine that is in New Jersey, and that's good. And it also protects the village to maintain the integrity of the village. I think, yeah, that's why the board already approved the, the housing element of the, of the Master Plan. And these are just the ordinances that give it the effectiveness that is required.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Mary Ann.
I can add to that, that we worked, just really, we collaborated with Fair Share Housing, our special master, and working with Fair Share Housing with the understanding that we, our goals and objectives were designed to achieve realistic opportunities for affordable housing. And with that in mind, we set out with this strategy to make those realistic opportunities become reality. And many of the, what we are seeing is some of those are memorializing what is already in the process of being built. But other aspects are really, we believe, and Fair Share Housing was certainly a partner with, with us in this, that it's not just a good outcome, it's a, it's a really great outcome for the village of Ridgewood, for the future of affordability for many who otherwise wouldn't be able to be here. So we're excited. We think it's a good plan, great plan.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, I guess the motion would be to approve 3816, 17, 18, 19, 20. And for 16, there would be just a comment that the, the 20 for the rental should be 15. And I guess any renumbering should be considered if it's not in order. And then for 18, the typo to amend the, so does someone want to make a motion to approve those with those revisions?
Or to make the recommendation to the governing body with those revisions?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jim, we have a second?
I'll second.
I think that Lorraine and I have to be.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lorraine.
Who was the second?
I'll second.
Okay, Diane. Okay, call the roll, Jane.
Okay. Mayor Newson? Chief Gore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds, you have to abstain.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Is it Brian?
Yes.
Ms. Hoobin?
Ask a question. Chris, if I vote no, do I not get, is this one of those ones where I don't get, I, I can't, I have no access to commenting on this later?
Well, Melanie, the only thing is recommending that the governing body adopt these ordinances from a land use board expertise standpoint is what, is what you're voting no to. So if you don't find that the particular ordinances are satisfactory, you can vote no. But if those ordinances come back in a different form, you, you have a fresh slate at that time. If they're adopted, it's over, Johnny.
Then it's not even, it's not like the way the site plans are. So I'm a no.
Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Joel, would you be writing a letter or would you like input, whatever you need?
Okay. Jane, can you take the first cut on that for me? Okay, thanks.
And run it by us, too. That'll be great.
All right, our next item will be memorialsization of the resolution for the village of Ridgewood Master Plan Element 1, entitled Our Village, Our Future.
And this is basically a very simple resolution, similar to a resolution that we did on the housing element. This is the threshold element of our Master Plan. And after all the work that everybody has done on this in the, in the village, and its final cleanup, it's in, it's now completed, ready to be approved as the Master Plan Element Number 1 for this village. And the sum and substance of the resolution is the report itself. Instead of writing a hundred-something-page resolution, it's basically supporting the board's position on adopting it and attaching the final copy. That's why there were so many drafts going on.
Okay, I saw one typo on page 3.
Take a red pen away from him.
Fourth line going up, it said sect, it should be section. Do you see that?
I do, and we will have that fixed in the morning and send it to Jane.
Okay.
Yeah, Jane, unless you have it in Word, but I'm not sure.
If not, I could do it in Adobe and type it in and send it in.
We'll clean it up.
Okay. All right, so I guess for everyone that voted yes last time, they're able to vote on this, to approve this resolution. Does anyone have any comments on the resolution, any? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'm not going anywhere.
I'll second.
Okay, Diane. Okay, call the roll, Jane.
Okay. Mayor Newson?
Yes.
Chief Gore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hoobin?
Yes.
Ms. Pateri, you weren't, Ms. Pateri?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody that was there?
Okay, all right, so that's approved, the resolution. Our next item will be Hopper Ridge Condominium Association, Inc., Block 4104, Lot 3, Application for Major Preliminary and Final Site Plan, Soil Movement and Variance Approval. This is continued from October 6 and carried from October 2020, without further notice.
I need to recuse myself, so.
Okay.
Later.
Okay, thanks, Diane. So Dave Rutherford?
Yeah, we need David Rutherford. We need T-Bore.
Yep.
Is there anybody else, Mr. Rutherford, that should be on?
Mr. Latincich, our engineer. And our, and our short, our court reporter also, I believe it's Rhonda this evening.
Yeah, Rhonda Reinstein, I say.
I think that's all I need right now. I know that our, there are representatives of my client, but when and if they need to speak, they'll be elevated to a panelist. So I think if I have Mr. Lat, yeah, I see Mr. Latincich and I see the reporter, so that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
T-Bore speaking. If Dylan can assist me, I'm ready to share the screen. I have various exhibits in the PDF format, but there is some coordination, I believe, that needs to take place.
All you're gonna need to do is click down on the bottom, share screen, and choose the PDF that you have open.
Okay. If we can just do a test run here. Okay.
Okay, Dave, I don't know if you wanted to give an intro, just indicate.
Yeah, just, yeah, I'm gonna try to be brief, Mr. Chairman. I, I heard the discussion earlier, and I recognize that there are a number of interested parties that were very patient at the first meeting. And so I have a little bit of a brief summary here. I have some hopefully brief testimony from Mr. Latincich. He's gonna share some photographs. And then I will make him available for questions by the board and the board professionals, interested parties.
Okay.
When we were here on October 6, the board heard a lot of engineering testimony. There'll be a lot more this evening, I'm sure. I just want to emphasize that this wall repair project is essential. And as you've heard several times already, it is a need, not a want. The walls are at the end of their useful life, repairs essential. I would suggest that the issues presented are primarily engineering and technical in nature and not necessarily planning. We certainly are here, obviously, because we need variances relating to height of walls and construction in the riparian zone. But those requests are simply unavoidable, given the topography of the property and the nature of the project. Compliance with DEP regulations is also a requirement. So in short, there isn't an awful lot that can be done here, but I will say that we are certainly receptive to board an interested party comment. Obviously, it's a big project, and we want to try to minimize the impact to the greatest extent possible upon the community. But there's not an awful lot that can be done here to alter the design or the construction process. It's just a job that simply has to be done. You heard testimony at the first meeting with respect to the three detention basins that serve the site, as well as a portion of the village stormwater system. The townhomes are clustered around and above a series of landscaped tie crib walls, which have deteriorated and require repair. And what we're proposing to do is to construct reinforced geo-grid textured modular concrete block walls in front of the existing walls. And because the walls to the southernly two basins will be, will encroach into those basins, the north basin must be enlarged in order to meet DEP requirements. Mr. Latincich is gonna talk a little bit tonight, not so much about the technical engineering aspects of the plan, but construction sequencing and timing with the hope of giving the board and interested parties a better idea of what they can expect as this project proceeds. Just a brief note on access. You heard at the last meeting that we proposed to use an existing driveway and emergency access roadway from Cedar Street. We will also be using Durar Avenue and Daniel Lane. Those are roadways within the condominium complex itself. We have had some contact with the property owner on Cedar Street since the last meeting. I won't speak for that property owner. She may be present this evening, her representative may be present, so I'm not gonna speak for her. But I do believe that, I am very hopeful that we can make arrangements for that. If that existing driveway cannot be used, the project can and unfortunately must still proceed. But using the Cedar Street access will speed things, it will spread around the activity relating to the project and will facilitate it. We're all aware that there's a sewer line that runs under a portion of that driveway. The access driveway actually is not exactly located over some easements that appear of record in that location. And we are all aware of that. My client, certainly, my client's contractors, my client's engineer, Mr. Rutherford Schausser is certainly well able to protect the village interests as well. We're very confident that this project can proceed without damage to that sewer line. So as I indicated a moment ago, Mr. Latincich will this evening focus the balance of his testimony on sequencing the amount of soil to be removed, how that will be accomplished, talk a little bit about tree removal and vegetation. And finally, just very briefly, you've also heard testimony at the first hearing about the potential dredging of the north pond. That, as I indicated earlier in my opening statement, does receive stormwater runoff from the village's stormwater system. And because, my understanding, I've been told, that's because it's the first pond in the string. It receives a tremendous amount of silt and was last, I think, dredged about 20 years ago. I should be clear, while we do seek the approvals necessary to permit us to do that, that is of, I don't wanna say secondary importance, but it's of a lower priority right now. That dredging is likely gonna require a cooperation from other governmental entities, perhaps the village, perhaps the Bergen County Mosquito Commission. So, and furthermore, my client really doesn't have the budget to do the dredging, not dredging, I'm sorry, dredging at this, at this particular time. So we're gonna like, we're gonna seek those approvals, but we're bifurcating it to the extent that we would like the board to certainly deal with the walls first, because that has to be done. The dredging is an optional thing that could be done in the future, when and if it's feasible and there are funds available to do it. So with that, unless there are questions of me, I'm prepared to proceed with Mr. Latincich.
I just want to remind T-Bore that he's still under oath, and it's continuation of testimony. And when people cross-examine, they can cross-examine on what's testified today and what he previously testified to last meeting.
That's correct. And I did, the board should have a transcript. We provided a transcript of the first hearing. We will do the same for this evening as well. Again, if interested parties are interested. Again, if interested parties are interested in anything that was said, they can read that transcript and acquaint themselves with the testimony at the first hearing.
Okay, thanks, Dave. You may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Latincich, I think.
I'm sorry, my mic fell out. Mr. Latincich is already also still qualified as a professional engineer and a professional planner. Okay, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you very much. Mr. Latincich, you had showed some photos at the first meeting. They were a couple of years old, and we determined that it would be better for the board to see some current photographs. So you have taken some photographs since the October 6th meeting, and you're prepared to share them with the board now. Is that correct?
Correct, and I have shared the screen. Is everybody looking at photograph number 29?
Yeah, we don't see it just yet.
It's on, it is on my screen.
While we're waiting, I just want to ask a question. In the documents that the board received, when we're sharing these screens, can we please identify the document from our files, what we received, so that if we wanna pull it up on our own screen, that we have that option?
Yes, we can do that. Madam Mayor, I acknowledge that we filed a mountain of material with this application. And it was, you know, sometimes you try to strike a balance between being too complete and incomplete. There was probably, in retrospect, probably a little too much there, but we were trying to give the board a a background of the history of the project and the site, and we included the resolutions from the Hopper Ridge development, et cetera. So yeah, we'll try to be very deliberate. I don't think we're gonna be referring to much of that this evening. I think Mr. Latincich is probably primarily with the photographs and then just some general testimony. He also did provide Mr. Martin a written summary, though I should mention that. That was also an attempt to try to put in three or four pages what this project is about. So I think the board, we had received, had filed that with Ms. Wondergem, I believe, last week.
I'm sorry. Can we mark, the last set of photos were marked A2?
Yes.
And it was a collection of 28 photos. How many photos do we have now?
We have 22.
More?
Yeah, we have a T-Bore speaker. We have a total of 51 photographs.
All right, let's mark photograph 29 through 51 as A3 in total.
Thank you. Okay, and then I'm gonna let Mr. Latincich go in narrative form to try to walk the board through the photos in a, in a complete fashion, but in hopefully an expeditious fashion, because I am, I really do wanna give the opportunity for the board and its professionals and the public to ask him questions this evening. Thank you.
Okay, unfortunately, I'm struggling with the, with sharing the screen here. Dylan, can you share my photographs, 29 through 29 through?
51.
Well, start, let's start with 29 through 34.
What was the name of the file?
Well, those photographs, 29 through 34.
I mean, you're sharing right now, and you see the open files that you have?
Yes, I'm looking for my photographs here.
The new ones you sent were the 40 through 51.
Yeah. Okay, I also submitted 29.
You know, when the other ones were submitted?
I, yes, I submitted those on Monday. I think a week ago, Monday, and earlier today, to be, to be double sure.
That was the one that started with number 40.
Okay, there was also ones that started with 29. Let me see if I can get into my file here.
I don't have one that says 29 on the website.
Right there, 29 through 39.
You got 29 through 39?
Yeah, at number five, just highlight that one there. A number of five.
Richard, do you have that file?
No, it was on his screen.
It was just there.
In other words, we don't, we did not receive those. We have supplemental photos that are dated or received today.
Why don't we just start? If we can only find 49, 40. Why don't we start with those, Mr. Latincich?
Okay, unfortunately, the picture 29 is the photographs of the wall. I'm trying to back up into my L drive here, so I could locate these photographs.
The board just bear with us just for another minute or two. That would be helpful. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, it is on my screen. Is it on your screen?
No, you have to finish sharing. You have to make it shared.
Okay. How's that?
Nope. You had it before.
Okay, hit you. How's that?
Nope. You hit the share button, a white window pops up with the different screens that are open on your desktop. You choose the window that you want, and then click share one more time.
How's that?
Something's coming.
Yep, that's it.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board, for your patience. Mr. Latincich, let's jump right into the photos, please.
Okay, photograph number 29, which I took on September 15th. This is a photograph of the upper wall between 41 and 43 Kirah Lane. It is representative of the condition of the upper wall. My egg, and, and you can see there's a 24-inch tree right behind the wall. Scrolling down. Again, another picture of the upper wall. This is further to the south. One thing that is very evident is that the the material, the landscape ties for the upper wall was of a lower quality and probably a different shipment than the lower wall. Again, here again, you can see the upper wall on top of the lower wall in photograph number 31. Photograph number 32, this is further south above the middle detention pond. You can see there's been some repairs to the wall, but the crushstone that is integral to these walls and behind the walls is actually, you can see, is trickling out in gaps in the wall, so on, so forth. And this is actually what I, what I called a pinch point. This is the lower portion of the angle point behind 43 Kirah Lane right across from the pool. You could see the condition of the landscape ties and lower portions of the wall. Photograph number three, if can be rotated. Is unfortunately rotated, but it shows that wall, its entirety and the condition of certainly the lower portions of the wall is a major concern. So that, that is photographs of, so you have, understand the condition of these walls in year 2020. I trust that was helpful.
Why don't you continue with the rest of the photos?
Okay, well, that was that was the, the main intent was, was the give indication of photographs of the remainder of the site, I suspect I will be referring to as testimony proceeds.
All right, so just for the record, the balance of the photos that we've marked, I think, 29 to 39, and then we marked 40 to 51, correct, Mr. Martin?
Yes. Yes, and 40 to 51 are photographs of the Cedar Avenue Access Drive, which I suspect we'll be discussing this evening.
You just, we marked 29 through 51. In totality, it's A3.
Okay.
And two boards referring to each photograph as a testimony.
That's fine. All right, so Mr. Latincich, why don't we proceed? I indicated to the board, we're gonna offer some brief testimony. First of all, can you talk in just in very general terms about the sequence of construction here? And for the for the board's benefit, Mr. Latincich has experience in these types of projects. He's designed a number of them. He's familiar with the construction process and sequencing that goes on. He's not the contractor on this. His testimony this evening is intended to give the board as good an idea as we can right now of what's gonna be involved in the construction. Obviously, the final sequencing, et cetera, will be chosen by the contractor, but I think Mr. Latincich can give you a good idea, and I think that's a major concern for the board and certainly interested parties. So Mr. Latincich, you could talk a little bit about the sequence of construction in very, very general terms. What's involved here to do this, this wall project?
Okay, and I'm gonna try to pull up another plan sheet, which I was referring to. And please bear with me here again. Okay, and I have to screen.
So again, can we just get the name, the file that?
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor, you're absolutely correct. Mr. Latincich, when you pulled up the plan, can you identify it for the record, please?
Yes, and does everybody have plan sheet three of eight on their screen?
No.
No. Okay, let's try again. I have it on my screen.
Go back to Zoom. You click the share button, the green button. A white window will pop up, and you'll see all the open files that you have, and then choose the one that you want, and then click share again.
The second share button that you click is blue.
T-Bore, you turned off your video.
When I open different windows, I lose toolbars.
There you go.
Okay, does everybody have sheet three of eight?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Yes, thank you for your patience.
And Madam Mayor, this is, this is sheet three of eight. This was exhibit A1. It's the plot plan last revised October 10th, 2020. It consists of eight pages, and Mr. Latincich, this is page three of eight, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And as we, we've indicated, or we use the expression, these walls are between a rock and a hard place, specifically the, the units atop the walls and the pond. And the walls are being constructed in front of the existing walls, and it's practical matter, in some cases, within the footprint of the pond. So what is the challenge here is getting started, which is we are within the ponds, and for example, certainly in the north pond here, I'm tracing the footprint of the wall, which is the bright orange line work here. We are within the footprint of the pond. So critical to the sequence of construction is lowering the ponds. After the normal customary pre-construction meeting, the ponds will be lowered. And what we propose in that regard is it will be a pump system. We have the benefit in that the the municipal storm sewer, which drains to the north upper pond, indicating it enters a silt chamber, which is where I'm pointing with the cursor. And at that point, it drains into the pond, and there is a manhole here. It is proposed that pumps will be set up in the silt chamber and in this manhole and pump around or divert normal flows from the north pond and the middle pond to the outlet control structure at the south pond, allowing these ponds to be lowered and the silt in the, in the bottom of the ponds to be, to be dried out, so we could excavate down to a firm bearing material along the, the base of these walls. That is critical to starting this project. And that will be the, started in advance while the contractor is establishing solar erosion control measures, wheel blankets at access points, establishing his stockpile area and similar work. But the challenge here is getting started and lowering the water surface in these ponds, so these walls can be constructed. We acknowledge that if we have a major storm event, the pumps will not be able to keep up with a two, three, four inch rainfall. And at that point, water would flow into the ponds as it normally does today. So central to it is establishing the, the north pond, and we are, there's an existing culvert, corrugated metal culvert at this choke point between the a pool and the Kirah Lane units. That culvert is also in need of being replaced. It is a component of the project. And that culvert allows us to control the water surface in the north pond. Once that culvert is in place, it will allow us, the north pond could function as an independent detention pond. So if we have a major storm event, the north pond may fill up, but the middle and the south pond are still protected, and we are pumping around those ponds. Once the base course is set and several courses are blocked, essentially, the retaining wall becomes the haul road. And once we are up and out of the water, the initial challenging portions of the project will be behind us. And we're up and out above the ponds, and the backfill behind a new wall essentially, essentially becomes the haul road as the walls are constructed course by course. as the walls are constructed course by course, the geo grid placed, and the material compacted.
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you.
I anticipate the question, what is the period of time for this construction? The target is three months. That is presuming normal customary good weather. If there's a solid week of rain in the middle, that will slow things down. That is presuming a 7 to 5 workday. That is presuming working on Saturdays. But the target is three months. And yes, we have previewed this project. We have solicited bids from seven contractors for a number of reasons, and we have previewed timeframes with them. And yes, three months is a realistic target for the project. And of course, a component of that is the contractor that is selected and the number of crews. There are three distinct walls. And yes, if they have three wall crews, three walls can be worked on at one time. Obviously, if the selected contractor has one wall crew, it will take longer. But presuming proper manpower and equipment, three months is the target period. As the as the ponds are being lowered, which means the silt in the bottom of the ponds is starting to dry out, and you can work with it. Erosion control measures are being placed, stockpile areas are being established. Early on would be tree removal. There as fact, this is on Plan Sheet 3, which will increase. There is a tree removal schedule. And 26 trees are proposed to be removed. Those trees are indicated by their bright red Xs within the actual trees. I emphasize, there is no tree removal above the upper wall. In fact, that 24-inch maple that was in Photograph 29, that's this maple right here I'm pointing at, is my recommendation that that tree should be removed under any circumstance due to its location. It is not essential to the project. It is not a component to the project. The tree removal is indicated by the bright Xs. That would be early on. At the closure of the project, there would be 26 trees, actually 16 trees being removed, 26 trees being planted. And those trees are native riparian trees, which are indicated by the bold green tree symbols. I specify one, I indicate one tree, I point out one tree to the board, which is a Norway spruce at the north end of the northern wall. That is the one location where this wall is visible from neighbors. The wall is essentially in a ravine, hidden from sight, except for the one location where it curves in to meet this existing concrete wall. We are specifying a Norway spruce in that location, which is a classic buffer species. In other cases, we are specifying native riparian plantings.
And we, Alex, Mr. Latincich, the memo of the board's planner suggesting that a final landscaping plan certainly would be a condition of approval, something that is probably best designed and planned when construction is complete, and that could be done in conjunction with the village planner and the village engineer, correct? I believe that was in her review letter.
Yes.
Okay.
And we would ask that, and again, I'm indicating with my cursor the various replacement plantings, in some cases, in locations where there are no trees today. For example, below the north wall, in other locations, we are planting trees to replace trees that are necessary to cut down. There is, along the North Pond, there is a bamboo grove, which I am tracing with my cursor. It is on either side of the stormwater discharge from the municipal storm sewer system, which I am tracing with my cursor. I'm presuming that people can see my cursor on their screen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, this, this big box here is the silt chamber, which the municipal storm sewer discharges to. And then from the silt chamber, there's a drainage pipe, a corrugated metal drainage pipe, which discharges to the north upper pond. Either side of that, there is a bamboo grove. That there is disturbance to that bamboo grove with the enlargement of the North Pond. I point out that the village tree ordinance specifically prohibits the planting of bamboo, as it is an invasive species. And in fact, the village ordinance under Tree Chapter, I believe is Chapter 262, encourages this eradication. We are expanding the North Pond in the area of the bamboo grove, so there would be a removal of that bam group, bamboo. And we are specifying native riparian trees. The purpose of this expansion is that twofold. It did, well, one is compensating fill within the pond below the regulated water surface, which is this gray area I'm tracing with my cursor. And DP has pretty much a standard rule that no net loss of state open waters. And even though that these are man-made ponds, man-made ponds that function as detention ponds, they are classified as state open water. So that is criteria number one. And criteria number two, the primary function of the ponds is stormwater management for the project itself, and the ultimately is 60 acres from the municipal storm sewer system. And that stormwater storage is the storage above the normal water surface of the pond. So to maintain that stormwater capacity or that stormwater management capacity, we have to maintain the same surface area of the ponds that we start with. So we're taking the simple stupid approach of expanding the pond, the equivalent that we are reducing it in other areas to construct these walls. And those areas are the gray shaded areas between the wall and the edge of the existing ponds.
So would it be accurate to say that, once you've lowered the water level and you get the first couple of courses of concrete block in, the wall builds and it's backfilled, for lack of a better word, behind it essentially at the same time, right? The wall grows and the backfill goes up behind it. Am I correct?
Yes, the wall will rise in height course by course with eight inches at a time. The material is backfilled behind the walls, compacted, which is a key element in the construction of these walls, the proper compaction of the tail behind the walls.
Okay, and what's compacted behind there is a combination of crushed stone? And I think you said geo, geo grid material, correct?
Yes, the geo grid is a component of the walls. A layman would call it mesh. It's a polyethylene reinforced mesh that is accessing, in layman's terms, dead men for the walls.
Okay, so there's soil going, coming in, there's material coming in to backfill the walls. And then there's also some material going out, right? That's primarily, if I'm correct, related primarily to the North Basin to expand it in size. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. What else? You've indicated that there's some 160 pallets of material. That's the concrete block, right? And how do you anticipate that would be brought onto the site?
Well, it will come by a truck. It needs to be stored. And let me pull up another plan sheet here. Is Plan Sheet 2 of 8?
And again, that's the plan sheet that was marked A1 at the beginning, correct?
Yes, and it's Plan Sheet 2 of 8 on everybody's screen?
Yes.
Okay, the primary stockyard area, and I think everybody's appreciating the magnitude of this project. There is an ideal stockpile area in the southeast corner of the site. Ideal because it is level. It is accessed by the emergency access driveway that goes to Cedar Avenue. It is in direct proximity to the North Pond and the Middle Pond. So we have identified a stockpile area and erosion control measures about that stockpile area. To utilize that stockpile area to its full utility, there is some tree removal, which is indicated. Some of those trees are dead, and I think it would be helpful, I'm going to access some photographs of that area, so everybody can have a good visual of it. Before I do that, this is the emergency access drive. This is the Hopper Ridge property line, indicating with my cursor. It continues out to Cedar Avenue. There is also, in addition to the emergency access drive easement here, there is the sewer line, 15-foot wide sewer line easement. And there's actually, the sewer line is not entirely within that easement, but runs at an angle to this first manhole, and then continues what used to be the Hopper Avenue right of way, which was vacated, but left a 15-foot wide sanitary sewer easement. There's a third easement, a drainage easement for the storm sewer line, which I'm tracing, which is the blue line, which runs from the municipal drainage system in Cedar Avenue to the silt chamber to the North Pond. So there's a whole series of easements here, and then access driveway to the southeast portion of Hopper Ridge. And I'm going to load some photographs here. Please bear with me. Is everybody looking at photograph number 40?
Yes.
Okay, 40 is the Cedar Avenue curb cut leading to the emergency access driveway, the silt chamber discussed. Number, I believe, 388 Cedar Ave is to the left on the photograph. 384 is to the right. But that is the curb cut, the concrete apron, there's a sidewalk. And then the next photograph is photograph 41, again, is another picture of that curb cut and the access drive. There's fences on either side of that access driveway. 42, I'm now on the access driveway. The chain link fence to the left indicates the character of this access drive. The sewer line is coming in at an angle. And there's a drain line under this access driveway, storm sewer line. Number 43, again, titled Cedar Avenue Emergency Access. This is our first sewer manhole. That sewer line runs an angle across the adjoining property. This gazebo is on the adjoining residential property. This big box with the steel grate here is the silt chamber. This stockade fence actually is not the Hopper Condominium Association fence property line, but it actually is 40 feet in. The property line runs actually just beyond this gazebo and the trampoline on the neighbor's property. This is the bamboo grove I previously referred to. The sewer manhole, the sewer line here is a little bit more than four feet deep, providing about two and a half feet of cover to the top of the 15-inch sewer line. Two feet is recognized as the required cover or burial depth to protect the pipe. Clearly, any truck traffic would be prudently smart to straddle the manhole with their tires and in accessing. This is typically, this is a gate. Again, the the stockade fence, the property line is actually the Hopper Condominium Association property line is just beyond this silt chamber where I'm tracing with my cursor. This is proceeding down, and then we get into Hopper Ridge proper. The emergency access drive, we actually have concrete paver pavement here, specifically for emergency vehicle, but made for very ideal circumstances for truck traffic delivering pallets of concrete block or crushed stone to be stockpiled in this area. We're approaching the stockpile area here, where you see the topography is advantageous. This is the neighbor's chain link fence. The bamboo grove I referred to earlier, that would be disturbed in the expansion of the pond. This is looking from the interior of Hopper Ridge out towards Cedar Avenue along this level access driveway. And this is our projected stockpile area. Yes, some of these trees are, would be removed to, because they will be ultimately disturbed. And there's actually some dead trees amongst those trees that should be removed. Again, this is the stockpile area. These homes in the distance are the homes that front onto South Irving Avenue. But you can see that from a topographic perspective, ideal for stockpiling soil, concrete block, crushed stone, that the contractor will need to access during construction. And this is looking from the Um, and this is looking from the easterly property line of Hopper Ridge. Again, I'm tracing our general stockyard area. This is the pool house in the background. The Hopper Ridge pool is behind the stockade fence indicating with my cursor. So that is the primary stockpile area. I'm gonna go open another file. Bear with me. If I shift to the southern end of the site, and this is the sawtooth wall. Yes, there'll be localized stockpiling in the Daniel Court paved area. And this goes to access.
For what sheet is this?
This is sheet four of eight.
Of Exhibit A1, Mr. Martin, Exhibit A1.
It's the primary, it's the primary plan set sheets one through eight, specifically Plan Sheet four of eight, which is focusing on the southerly lower detention pond and access to that. This case, daily material would be stockpiled within the Daniel Court paved area. Yes, residents will have to make accommodations. But what I want to focus on, in this case, we are proposing circular access around this cluster of units. This is a very steep slope, very different, difficult location. And time is, time is money, time is efficiency. A circular motion will allow material to be delivered. And once deposited, the skid steerer will continue and in a circular motion, which will be much more time-effective and efficient. And, and I think this is a concern of residents, reducing the amount of backup beepers, which are by OSHA regulations, you know, loud and obnoxious for good reason. So if we are, and I, let me take a step back. The equipment to construct this will be, obviously, material will be delivered by tandem trucks or the concrete block will be delivered by tractor trailers, unloaded with skid steers. The, but ultimately track holes will be required to access this area for all the areas for the initial excavation. The concrete block and the crushed stone will be ferried in with small, small-scale equipment, skid steers. But ultimately, the concrete block will be placed by hand. But transported as much as practical with skid steers. If we have, in this case, at the south wall, circular access, and we've previewed it with the homeowners' association, this area is landscaped very nicely. There will be disturbance. And it will be restored afterwards. Restored meaning stabilized, not finished landscaping. There's riparian trees being specified. But in terms of shrubbery and flowers, that would be up to the homeowners' association. But the circular motion really reduces or increases the efficiency by a factor of two or reduces the time in transport by 50% and will reduce the amount of backup beepers with the skid steers that are transporting the concrete block on the pallets or bringing in the crushed stone in their buckets or the, the backfill the wall. Significant savings in time. Um, so that's just to give everybody indication of the sequence of this construction at either end of this project.
Mr. Latent, is anything else that you want to add? Otherwise, we'll, we'll, we'll finish for the moment and let you be questioned by the board and its professionals.
I truly think I've spoken way too long.
Okay. That's fine. And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I do have just a procedural concern. By noting an accumulation of Q and As and chats at the bottom of the screen. And I realize we are in the Zoom format, I understand that. And I appreciate what the board did earlier to try to let interested parties know how these proceedings are to be conducted. I would respectfully ask that members of the public in person participating in the Zoom be discouraged from posting Q and As and chats, because I haven't seen them. I don't know if the board sees them or not. I know, certainly, I know the board understands that this matter is to be decided solely on the basis of the testimony in the exhibits posed during the hearing. But I think it would be a good idea if we could discourage that. And obviously, members of the public know that they will be given a full and fair opportunity to ask all the questions they want and make all the comments they want at the appropriate time. It's just a little concerning to me when I see chats and Q and As posted that we don't know what they are and therefore cannot respond to them. So I'll just, I'll just mention that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would just ask that the public not do any Q and A or chats. You'll have the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Listings. And that's your opportunity, if it relates to that. And if it's a public comment type question, that there'll be an appropriate time for that. So I would like nothing to be posted on the Q and A or the chat. And any board members, I would ask that you don't consider that as part of the record, only what the witnesses are presenting through testimony and through exhibits.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're not, we're not responding to them if it makes you feel any better, Mr. Rutherford.
No, that's okay. I don't misunderstand. I totally understand that the Zoom process is much more informal and I guess to a certain extent provides perhaps more participation than might otherwise occur. It's just that, and I knew the board understood that. I just felt it would be important so that interested parties understand too that the board will not be responding to those and obviously cannot consider them. So thank you. Yes, thank you for that.
Okay, all right. So now we're gonna cross by the board. Anyone have any questions for T-Bore?
I have a question about the emergency entrance on Cedar. It looks like there's a tree in the way as soon as you pull in. Is there gonna be trees taken down on the right?
Okay, that is, yes, there's a large sycamore, and I just called up Plan Sheet one of eight. Can everybody see that? Okay, yes, there's a large, it's easily a 30-inch sycamore. There will be no tree removal along that access. And in that case, we will put down crushed stone to protect the roots, three-quarter inch crushed stone as a bedding to protect the roots of that tree from compaction.
Okay, so you're not removing, it looks like it's almost dead.
No, it's, actually, it's a stately tree. You can see they actually shifted the access drive to favor it. Let me pull that up. I'm getting better at, getting much better at mounting things here. Okay, this is now Plan Sheet two. Okay, that is that large sycamore tree. And you can see they actually shifted the access drive to favor that tree. If you, so I just pointed that out.
Yeah, because it looked like in the picture that it wouldn't be wide enough to get through. But I guess, you know, it's hard to see in the picture.
Yeah, she, you can get through there, yes.
All right, the other question I have, are you leaving the railroad ties? And you're just backfilling it?
Yes, the top on the upper wall, as a practical matter, probably the top three layers of railroad tie will be, excuse me, landscape tie, landscape ties will be removed.
But the bottom wall will stay, the bottom?
Yes.
Because as they rot, isn't it gonna cause sinkholes?
At a localized level, yes, but being that the oxygen is being cut off to them, they will cease to rot.
All right. The other thing is the culvert gonna be repaired first? So if we do have a big flood, it'll work, it'll be able to drain through?
Yes. And I have a picture of that culvert, let me pull that up. I believe unfortunately, it's not.
That's it right there, would you stand on it?
I'll stand, well, actually, I'm, that's my left foot is on the culvert. That is not, that is actually a piece of debris. That, yes, this will be one of the first elements in the sequence of construction. It would be the removal of this corrugated metal pipe culvert and replaced with a 48- or 60-inch reinforced concrete pipe. It's in very poor condition. I'm seeing if there's a supplemental photograph here. No, there is not.
I just wanted to make sure that was replaced first, so we don't get any flooding from if the pumps can't keep up with the rain.
Well, it's, it'll be replaced very early on. What we have to get to it first and create the access. It is no different than what's there out there today. This is, I think, David, the pinch point, this is what is out there today. If we had a major rain, the very first day we started, it would be no different than a major rain tomorrow. That being said, yes, replacement of this and obviously, we start at the bottom. This is among the very first elements to be reconstructed when and repaired when the project starts, absolutely.
Okay, that's all right. This is photo number 35?
That is photo number 35.
Yeah, I was bending my neck trying to read it.
The way of rotating this, if Dylan could assist me. I have to enable something here.
I think you go to Tools.
To View.
Left-hand side.
Okay, all right, it's okay, Tools.
All the way up on top, on the left-hand side of the.
Yeah, just where it says View.
All right, all right, and.
Five View.
Yeah, I would have hit View, and then you twist it. But you gotta bring the photo up again.
Go back and hit Tools.
If I was gonna say View, but maybe I'm wrong.
I didn't see the View.
Yeah, up on the toolbar, on top.
I think we went a bridge too far with my cable here.
Okay.
As far as you identified it as 35, we're good.
Okay, it's photograph 35, I apologize if people have to turn their neck.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Any other board members have questions?
I have a question, if no one's going. Um, just, just a quick question for you on the location of the new wall being built on the different areas. Can you tell me, on average, how far, I want to say closer to the the ponds that new wall is? What's the distance of the wall from the old wall to where the new wall is being built?
Okay, the new walls being typically 12-foot in front of the existing walls. And that's for a number of reasons. One, basic access, you really need 12-foot to squeeze between the new wall and the existing wall. You cannot run compacting equipment within three feet of the existing wall. So you already lose, automatically lose three feet. So it's 12-foot, and then there's the actual GeoGrid length, which is typically eight feet long. So for all sorts of reasons, the, it is 12-foot. And um, let me pull up a Plan Sheet three to give a good. Everybody has to Plan Sheet three in front of them?
Yes.
Okay. And for example, this, this dimension is 12-foot from the wall, between the walls is 12-foot, which also gives us a graded slope which lowers these walls. And just to give a visual on that, again, I'm gonna.
I recall, so it's easier just to, from your saying, from an equipment perspective, you can't go within three feet of the wall, I understand that. But you're saying from a construction standpoint, because it's lower and it's easier to move equipment in and out, your recommendation?
It's, it's not, it's essentially, I would not use the word easier. It's essential, you have to be able to the, for example, an absolute minimum is eight-foot between the walls due to the design of the walls, which are dependent on the GeoGrid. And absolute, and, and see this, I'm tracing this dashed line. That is the depth of the GeoGrid from the face of the wall back to the wall. That's an absolute minimal. As a practical matter, to be able to maneuver equipment, you need 12-feet. I've already, at this southern end of this wall, and I've already heard it from the contractors, you can see I angled this wall, and the wall here is stepping down. It's not very tall here. In order to save these trees here, I angled the wall, and it's, it's narrower here, but the wall's low here. That was specifically to save these two trees. I've already heard it from the contractors that it's gonna cost, they could replant 10 trees for what it's gonna cost them in time in this, in this pinch point here. So these are judgments.
So the minimum required distance from the old wall to the new wall is 12 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my, my second question is, is the North Pond, it looks like it butts up to the property line, are you allowed to overflow for the water?
It does not butt up to the property line, is approximately the, the, this is the existing, this fence, the property line is off this plan sheet. The property line is 40 feet. For practical matters, it's almost just the old black wall.
Yeah, I can't, I, yeah, I can't see on the screen. So I wanted to make sure that dashed line was not the property line.
No, the dashed line is the fence. You can see the screen?
Okay.
This is the fence, this is the property line, this is the existing pond, this is the proposed pond.
Okay, is there a reason for the stockpile area two that you're showing there? You didn't look at to put it in the middle pond?
Okay, yes, stockpile number two is within the footprint of where we're expanding the pond, so we're inherently disturbing that area. So it makes all the sense that while we're working in this area to use it as a stockpile area before we excavate below the normal water surface. It's just a very efficient use of that. use of that area. It is going to be disturbed. It is going to be excavated. Before we do the final excavation for the pond, we're going to use it as a stockpile area. It's just, it's an efficient way.
I'm sorry, I'm asking the question wrong. My apologies. Is there a reason you didn't look for the, where you're saying your stockpiling is that is going to become a detention basin? Is there a reason you didn't look at adding the detention basin to the middle pond?
Yes, topograph.
That was my question, sorry.
Okay, yes, topographic reasons. This area is level, has good access. And the silt pond, the north pond is the primary silt trap. So by, it's, it makes more sense from a drainage and environmental perspective to expand the north pond. That being said, if we go to the middle pond, it is much more steeper topography. If you're familiar with the site, we, this, this is a steep bank down to this pond. To expand this pond, we do, you would have to build retaining walls. Yeah. So, which of course adds to the expense to the homeowners association to an already expensive project. The most practical place to expand and the most from a stormwater management perspective, it's more meaningful at the, at the north pond. From an environmental perspective, since this is the most effective silt trap, which is clearly evident, if you're familiar with the ponds, it makes the most sense to expand the north pond.
Okay, I have no further questions for right now.
Question. Um, between the new wall and the old wall, once the new wall is constructed and those trees are planted, what is in that space?
Okay, this is, this is a great, this is a graded slope. This, the area between the new wall and the existing wall is backfilled. And this is graded at three horizontal to one vertical. We, we specify some trees. And we also specify a crown vetch cover, which is a clover type of grass, has purple flowers in the springtime. If the homeowners association wanted to take on an ambitious gardening project, they could certainly put wildflowers or whatnot here. We are specifying a split rail fence at the top for safety purposes. But this is a three on one, 33% slope between the existing wall and the proposed wall.
Will any of the existing walls still be visible or will it be covered by the backfill?
It will be covered by the backfill.
But to answer Allison's question, I just want to make sure it's not for homeowner use, that 12 feet?
No, absolutely not. There is, it is a three on one slope. You can maintain a three on one slope. Is it comfortable to walk on? No. Is, this is, absolutely, this is, there should be no perception here that this is, the goal here is to, that expanding backyard areas, absolutely not.
I'm not asking that, I'm just saying I could go and find myself on a blanket or a towel laying out there enjoying the sun. So I, that's why I'm asking the question on if that's becoming homeowner use or intended.
No.
It did mention a walking path. Where is that?
Okay, that is, that is actually, we, something I proposed. And I just proposed, there's no specific detail on that, but we are creating in, what our existing culvert is being, we are curving these two walls. We are creating land area here also sloping down at three on one. But it is possible to put a walking path here to get to the pool.
So a walking path?
Not a sidewalk.
A walking path for the residents there?
Yes.
Not for the general public, but not with access to any other outside area? A walking path specifically for these homeowners?
Correct.
At, at an, at, I, all right, I'll hold off for a minute.
I have a couple of questions. So the, the trucks that are going to be coming in and out, how, how large are they?
The, there would be tandem dump trucks of, you know, your typical, your typical tandem dump truck that is roadway legal.
Okay. I mean, they're going to be really noisy, right?
There could be a typical diesel truck that is.
Okay. Trying to get an idea, when would you want to start the project? Is this like, I assume you wouldn't want to do it in the winter?
Well, I, I'm sorry to say our initial target was now. And unfortunately, in, you know, COVID hit and we all, we all know what happened in February, March.
Right.
Our current target is early spring.
Okay. And you say it would be from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Yes. I, and I'd have to check the, I'm sure Chris can advise what the Ridgewood.
Ordinance.
Right, right. I don't think you're allowed to start till 7:30.
Okay.
And then on Saturdays, I think you're, I think that's only nine to one, something like that. So.
How would that impact your timeline?
Right.
Well, okay, let me, let me. Okay, these. Obviously, it impacts the contractor. And the, this is a, is clearly a very difficult project. It is not an attractive project. It's difficult work, difficult access. We've, and that's why we've contacted a number on behalf of the HOA, a number of contractors. I know this sounds crazy, but we have to make it attractive. And when COVID hit, I, I first thought that, well, you know, if the economy slows down, you know, perhaps it will make this project more attractive for contractors to the benefit of the homeowners association. And quite the opposite has happened, as we all know. There's a real estate boom going on in North Jersey with the exodus from New York City. And I suspect Ridgewood is, is leading the parade with New York City expatriates. I can tell you specifically, trying to get a, if you're doing septic repairs in Norton, in Bergen County, typically septic contractor would be out two to three weeks. Now it's 16 weeks. Where I'm going with this is it would be very advantageous to the homeowners association and the project in the, if the contractor can work a full day, be it seven to five, 7:30 to five, and a full day on Saturdays. If the HOA wants to bear that, because you know, the, it's going to cut down the timeline on the overall project and make it more attractive. It is an unattractive project. And, and the contractor, you know, he's not going to want to show up for, for half a day on Saturday.
It's, well, that's not up to, that's honestly, that's not our problem. Our problem is to adhere to the village ordinances and not to make this an attractive project to a contractor. I don't want to hear anything else about that, to be really honest. We have our village ordinances and we're going to comply with them. Our concern is how this impacts our town and the residents nearby. That's, that's it. I don't, I don't have any interest in hearing anymore at this time of night, after all of this, about how attractive this is to a contractor. So moving on, I'm not sure what part of Lorraine's question you were getting to. She was bringing up the ordinances. Our ordinances are what they are. Is there anything else?
So, I mean, I was getting at, you know, now that COVID has hit, everybody, you know, a large percentage of the work population is at home. A large percentage of the school population is at home. This is going to be very disruptive for the neighborhood. Everybody on Irving, on Cedar, it's going to be really hard for kids to do schoolwork. I mean, I don't know what you can do, but there's got to be, is there any way you could put up sound buffers temporarily? I, I don't know.
Okay, the, I would just add to that, the only thing that would be more disruptive would be an emergency project, be it a wall or the sewer behind the wall. And I just, that's why the, obviously, the homeowners association is being very proactive with this project. We started on this in 2016. So it does not become an emergency project. But, so we are moving forward with, you know, a measured stride here. But yes, for example, let's take the, as I said, backup beepers. They are, they are loud.
Yeah.
They, and they're meant to be loud by OSHA standards for safety purposes. The, if the ordinance is 7:30 to five, there will be backup beepers, 7:30 to five. That's, you know, it is, this project, this project is a necessity. And, for example.
I, I think you've said that. And again, I know that this started in 2016 and it's four years and we're still talking, you know, talking about this. And to your point, before it becomes a problem. But I think Lorraine's point is valid. You know, you've got a lot of homeschooling. Kids are going to be cooped up all winter long, want to get outside for the first time come the spring. I mean, is it like, can they do double men to shorten the time? I mean, I know that there's a process in the way things need to happen. But I, I just think that it's, I, I don't know. I just think it's a lot to ask of not only the people that live there, but the people that live around that area, the things going on in town when kids are finally going to be able to get out after all winter. So I mean, if there's anything that, you know, someone can recommend to speed it up or to put up, you know, noise barriers, you know, dust when kids are finally getting outside. There's, there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of concern with, with kids coming out of a winter with who knows what's going to happen with COVID.
It seems that this has been declared, it's an emergency that this be done, but it has been going on four years.
Four years.
And there's some concern, I, I'm trying, I'm not, I'm wondering what, there's some immediate concern to have this done. And I'm understanding the necessity of it. But if it's an emergency to this extent, why, what was the holdup for the four years that we've been looking at this? I just, I'm curious, what did hold it up?
The, we have proceeded at a normal pace. There was the design work. All, all the, I mean, the, the normal process in.
Well, it says here, I mean, it does say that our, our, you know, our advice of our, our planner is to defer to the HOA about attractiveness. Design work is, are you talking about something to make it more attractive or find the right materials to use? Because if that's the case, and, and that we took any time to discuss a meandering path, that we're talking at all about the village paying for any aspect of this, whether it's dredging of the ponds. But, but we're talking about meandering paths and we've taken four years on design work or this. I'm just not understanding. I'm not understanding what level of an emergency we're at. If we're at a level of an emergency, it, it doesn't seem like it should matter what it looks like aesthetically. Most of this is not seen by anybody else, but that, those people that purchased property there. And I, I, I don't, I guess I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying. But if I may ask, the, it does say, you're asking that the village may have to, to bear some brunt of the cost of the dredging of this, of the retention pond. Who pays for the upgrade to the access road? The access road needs to be upgraded. Is that something that you would, that the HOA would bear the cost of?
Yes, that.
Okay.
And that, and that is why we have proposed these, the, to be ready with the dredging if the opportunity presents itself with the Bergen County mosquito commission, assistance from the village, because there's a lot of mobilization, erosion control measures, access, the access drive that needs to be done performed for the wall work and makes good planning that the, for example, the north pond be dredged at that point in time to take advantage of that. Once the site is, if the walls are constructed and the site is cleaned up, that opportunity is lost.
I'll, I'll just jump in here just for a moment and, and suggest to the board that there are a number of measures that, that the village has, tools that the village has to control this project. Obviously, one is the hours and days of work. And I should state for the record, unequivocally, we will comply with the village ordinance. There's no question about that. Second is that the village does have some control over it with respect to soil movement in terms of ensuring that streets are kept clean, discussing roots and all that kind of stuff. So the village has some control over that as well. So I, that's, I think that's something important for the board to remember. Those are kind of police power things that, that the board can deal with, that, that depart from, you know, the reason why we're here. And the second reason why we're here primarily for the site plan approval and the variances. And, and the other thing I'll, I'll note just very quickly is that I did in my opening statement, try to make clear that the dredging is a very, very secondary element to this project and indicated that the homeowners association is not in a position to do it right now. It may be that that north pond never gets dredged. All we're suggesting is that it does receive stormwater runoff from the village. That does lead to silt buildup in the north pond, but it, it may never get dredged, quite honestly. And so we're not here at all suggesting to impose any burden on the village taxpayers for that north pond dredging. We're just trying to explain to you, as Mr. Latincich just did, that the dredging might, could be, you know, will be a part of this project in an appropriate time to do it. But that's not, we're not suggesting that. And he has just indicated, yeah, the access road, whatever needs to be done there, obviously, the HOA will do.
Yeah, I guess my question, and I mean understandably, is just because this is not a project that benefits anybody other than the people in that. I mean, obviously, it certainly does if that, if the retention ponds were to have any sort of sanitary or sewer back, backup, it affects everybody. And I understand that we are served by those, by that sewer line. But the aesthetics and, you know, the, what, what happens here really benefits everybody in that living space and that's sort of it. Can I ask one last question? I don't mean to have taken anybody else's moment here. The railroad ties and, and the first wall, the wall, the retention wall, retaining wall built, backed up with, I'm sorry, I've been, I was at work since seven o'clock. My brain is mush. But the, the, those railroad ties stay there and they're backfilled in and then the, the new wall is built around it?
Front of it.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, yes, and that's what I mean, in front of it, backfill, railroad ties. So Mr. Van Goor asked before, if some of those trees that exist on there, they're going to create some sort of sinking and sinkhole or sinking pitting areas? And you, I believe you said they would at some point? Or it's possible that they would?
No, no, they actually did, because the oxygen is being reduced to those, the, they will, the level of, the rate of decomposition will be reduced. Okay, those, there are, let me get you a picture of these walls here. Hold on. Uh, hold on. It is a good picture, picture thirty-six. Okay, everybody see it? Okay, this, and essentially this, this is a north pond. This, this new wall will be constructed to my left. There'll be a three arm, one slope here. This wall will be backfilled. It is no different than what's there today. These, this wall extends eight feet behind the face of this wall. Landscape ties are buried today. They, and they will continue to be buried in the future. And this area will be, uh, the, will be backfilled. Yes, for example, this, this landscape tie here will continue to be, will continue to decompose. This little bit of, at that point, this whole area is now supported by the new wall. That is de minimis. That is not a concern.
That's, I'm sorry, repeat that last part. It's de minimis?
Is not a concern.
So there's absolutely no concern about the entire weight and the, the amount of that, the railroad ties decomposing to a point where they would shift and move the wall forward?
No.
Get with, unequivocally, there's not even the vaguest concern of that.
Yes, no concern.
Well, they're, I mean, they're moving now. So they were built, they were built, you know, how many years ago is it now? Thirty years they're, they're been there?
Late, late, late eighties.
Okay, so late eighties is even less than that. So, or, or, thank you. There. So I'm sorry. So they've only, they really haven't been there for that long. They're the foresight that, you know, I'm, I'm sort of wondering back then, what was the conversation before a planning board? Was there the conversation of would they deteriorate? And somebody said absolutely not, unequivocally they won't. And that's why those were put there. So I, I'm wondering if in, not a very long time from now, you know, thirty years, is that the amount of time that we're gonna be, some, some other planning board, certainly not with any of us on it, are gonna be having a meeting similar to this? Hearing about how that wall, the new wall needs to be built because it's shifting, it's moving, something's, something's happening. I, where, where, where do we stop? I, I mean, I just wonder if unequivocally, absolutely not, it's not gonna shift or move is something we can really rely on. But I'll take. So that's all I can go on.
I, I have a couple of questions and my sense is that this meeting could be continuing thirty years. So, and, and you'll just correct me if I misunderstood anything you said. It was, I was writing as we were looking at images and so my understanding was that you stated the, the water would be a pump around to divert and the ponds lowered and the silt would be dried out to find firm footing. Did I understand that correctly?
Uh, yes. For example, right where I'm, okay, this, this new wall is gonna be out here. This, this material here is going to be excavated down to firm bearing material. And to do that, this pond needs to be lowered and the silt has to dry out.
And so what is the, the first question is, how long does it take the silt to dry out?
It's variable. I, I, I can't give definitive. That's why the ponds will be lowered while in advance. It is weather dependent. But certainly a, a few weeks to let it dry out. So when you get an excavator in here, you can actually excavate, you can't excavate soup. We have, you know, liquid silt here. And they need to excavate down to firm bearing material in this, along the toe of this wall.
Right, so, so that's, that goes to my next question. How, what? What measures have you taken to establish how deep that firm footing might be? So presumably if you're, you have to, you don't, you don't know what's there. There's an unknown and your silt is going to dry out, but you really don't know what's beneath that, correct?
We have performed soil test holes. Yes, it is, you can only do so much under such conditions. You have to lower the ponds to do soil test holes. But if we go to the we're burying, the basic design is going at least two feet below grade with the block. And yes, for, for whatever, if you hit a soft area, for example, in here, you overexcavate that area and backfill would crush stone and compact it. That's normal and customary. If we go to the plans here and I'm sorry, I lost my tool bar again. But if you go to the plans and profile view, going down at least three courses a block or twenty-four inches. And if there is unsuitable material, you keep excavating until you get the firm bearing material. A soils engineer will be on site. Most likely Johnson Soils, whose offices are in Glen Rock. And they will inspect the bearing of the soil and document it.
So on the soil, the testings that you've already done, have we been, received reports on those? Because typically those boards would have reports.
Yes, that's part of the application.
Okay, so that was in there. Okay, thank you. Somebody had a question?
I thought we were waiting on those. I thought we hadn't received them. Am I wrong? Did anybody see them?
I, I don't recall seeing, that's why I did.
I thought that it was something we were waiting to get copies of, but I'm not sure.
Okay, I, I can pull it up here, but let me just, earlier question here, I finally got the plan sheet up. Okay, for example, here's the profile. This is happening to be the lower detention. Okay, there's the grade line, there's the slope line, we're burrowing three courses a block. And then there's crushed stone below this. So that's incorporated in. If I go to this was the information provided. I'm looking for this was the soil study by Johnson Soil, where we did form test holes, their findings, groundwater elevations and bearing capacity.
Yeah, Mr. Latincich, that's included in your letter to Ms. Wondergem dated May twenty-first, two thousand twenty. At the bottom of page two, item thirteen, I'm sorry, item fourteen. I think you're referring to the Johnson Soils Geo-Technical Engineering Report dated January eighth, two thousand twenty. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And they will be on site. And again, that critical, the critical part of the project is that early phase establishing your base course. And there will be onsite performing inspections and providing reports to the village engineer. That's, that's all normal and customary.
So, so in a, the best case scenario, and then there's always the worst case scenario. And so what happens if the worst case scenario is it takes them significantly greater depth to get to that firm footing?
Crushed, crushed stone. You bring, you import more crushed stone, you place it and compact it. What, what, what we have, you know, this, this area has already been excavated since its initial construction. So you're typically into deeper, better bearing material. What we have to move, remove is the silt that's accumulated over the years.
Understood.
And, and that, that's of course on top. And, but, you know, we've done our due diligence. And then, yes, there, no question, it's could be a line item in the contract for the HOA that if we have to bring in additional crushed stone for unsuitable bearing material, you get that price upfront, not, you know, oh my, oh, we have a, we have to bring in a hundred yards of crushed stone. That's, you know, so that is gonna be worked into the contract. And, and that's normal and customary in this type of work.
Now, I wanted to go back on, and I, I was trying to watch closely, but on sheet photo, I'm sorry, photo number forty-three. You identified a property line and a fence that was set in by forty feet. Wanted to take another look at that if you don't mind.
Okay, let me.
I'm sure we have a survey as well, but I'm just interested in the photo specifically.
That's it.
Now, I, I noted on my notes.
Forty-five, forty-three on the
Yeah, that's it. That's at forty-three. So precisely, you, you noted that, I almost pointed at the screen as if everyone could see me. It's like kind of a crazy thing, right? Nobody can see me pointing at the screen. On you, the, the wooden, I guess that's like a stockade fence. Whose property is that?
That is on, that is forty feet inside Hopper Ridge.
So could you just with your cursor, show us approximately again where the property line is?
Okay, if you look at the approximately, again, we're looking at a photograph, but the silt chamber is just inside the Hopper Ridge property line. So I'm tracing the, the, the approximate property line. This, I believe this tree is primarily on Hopper Ridge's property. Okay, but the property line is effectively just beyond these, and no surprise, I suspect the silt chamber was built, Chris would know better, was, was built after Hopper Ridge was constructed by the municipality. Silt chamber constructed by the municipality and they put it on Hopper Ridge's property, not three eighty-four Cedar Ave. So that property line is just running of, you know, one to three feet beyond this silt chamber.
Then I, I wanted to go back to the chief's question about the, maybe all over focused on the oxygen. You, I wrote down your words, but then it appears to me that when you responded to another board member's question, you changed the language you used in the statement somewhat. When you stated to the chief, you, you responded to him regarding the, those railroad ties. You stated, I wrote it down, oxygen deprived, they cease to rot. And then when Ms. Hoobin asked the same question, you said, well, it slows down the rotting. So you used two different responses, two different.
I would correct myself. The, 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 the decomposition is significantly reduced when it's buried. That doesn't mean that it's gonna be one hundred percent reduced. If it, for example, I'm looking at photograph fifty-one here. Now, obviously removing, removing this, these lower courses, this, you undermine this entire wall. And our concern to that is the sewer line that's behind this wall. So these are all factors we took into consideration.
Right, so, so just once again, so the, the first statement was the oxygen deprived, oxygen deprived would cease to rot. And now it's oxygen deprived significantly slows the rot. And, and what would be significant?
What would be significant?
Well, and I'm, and I'm actually, I'm asking this for a reason, because if I, if, if presumably maybe you've been on this project for the past four years, I, it's almost humorous to me that, that I think in two thousand sixteen, I was actually went back to look at when we started this process. If, if that were the case, could something have been done to deprive the timbers of oxygen and cease the rotting process? And, and slow this deterioration somewhat, at least stave off some of what's now going on there. It was it, and, and I guess I, when I, I'm looking through my notes and I'm, you know, making notes of where was the regular maintenance, where was the, you know, the, the shoring up of where there were issues with the wall. But, and I, I guess the question is, what would happen then if this were? And how far back is the, the, that asbestos piping?
I can give you, let me, it's a few feet. Let me have to look at a plan sheet here.
And then, and then I actually have another question. So we have, we have the, timber, the face of the timbers, but then perpendicular, we have going back the eighteen foot back, correct?
I believe it's eight foot. I would have to check the construction detail. But the dead men go back probably eight feet.
Okay, so those, those are the ones where we see the, the square face. So those are going perpendicular. So if those are going eight feet, where is that asbestos pipe running? Because by my calculation, every four inches or five or six inches, however, whatever the depth of that timber is, there's a, a perpendicular timber that's going eight feet back. So how far back is the sewer pipe?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you on the plan.
Yeah, and I know I've seen it, but I just, if you don't mind, just. And what is the, what is the diameter of that pipe?
It's a eight inch pipe.
But as an eight inch pipe, I'm, I'm having a hard time calculating where it can be if every six inches, the perpendicular.
Okay, now I'm gonna show you exactly where it is. Okay, again. Okay, this is the upper wall. This, this is the, this is the sewer pipe right here.
I'm, I'm missing too, I'm sorry, I'm missing your cursor, just.
Okay, this is I'm tracing the sewer line.
And where, so where, where? Right.
Here's the wall. I don't have a scale. It looks to be, it looks to be ten feet behind the wall.
The upper wall.
The upper wall. This, this dash line here, this is on my cursor, this is the limit of the crib wall behind the face of the wall.
So that's what, so in other words, just so, so we all understand that, that crib wall. So that's the limit of the crib wall.
That's the limit of the crib wall.
Again, just, just show me one more time, show me the, because the, the big, the
This is a sewer line though.
That's the asbestos sewer line, correct?
Yes.
Now, so, so now we are, what is the distance between the upper wall and that asbestos pipe?
It looks to be twelve, I, be twelve feet. This is eight foot. This looks to be another, looks to be twelve feet.
Now, show me the, these, and, and the pond is on the lower screen. So the next, the next line is the, the, the wall, the timber wall. Show me the, the lower timber wall.
This is the lower timber wall here.
So what I'm I'm confused about is. If that sewer line is, how many feet is it from that? I keep pointing at the screen. Nobody can see me pointing at my screen. Sorry. So. If the, what is the distance from the lower wall to that asbestos sewer pipe?
I will give you and put a scale to it. From the lower wall to the, okay, it is. Thirteen, thirteen and a half feet. Okay, and from the lower wall, which is here to is. Twelve to thirteen and a half feet, it varies. And, you know, and our concern is ultimately. Is a global failure of the of these walls. That's if the facing of the walls, the what the facing of the wall provides is not really a structural component. But it's containing the backfill behind the wall, which is crushed stone and gravel. So the the wall is goes from the lower wall back to this dashed line. And the landscape ties contain that crushed stone and gravel, which is the wall system. If this facing, as you can see, is decomposing. That sand and gravel flows out, this. Entire aerial will have a global failure. And that, at that point, our concern is that other than the obvious is this wall is failing. It's supporting the patios and decks. And it's supporting the sewer line. And if you go actually, the most, the most critical locations, of course. As we go up to the pinch point. Right here. Bear with me, other direction. And by that, when we were those dimensions, that was on the middle wall. Okay, now, the most critical location is right here, where we have, there's a sewer manhole here. The distance from that sewer manhole to the upper wall. Is nine feet.
As opposed to the original thirteen feet.
Yeah, and that was, that was on this wall here, the middle wall. It's variable. But our most, our most critical location is number forty three Kirillane. There there's a sewer man, this is the pinch point. This is where the wall is the tallest. That's that one photograph at the angle point. There's a sewer manhole here, nine feet behind this upper wall. If this wall fails, this sewer manhole will settle. And it and it may not be, it could be a minor settlement. A few inches. When that happens, this sewer manhole, this sewer line is gonna crack. And then you have sewage flowing down here and then these these homes have no plumbing and it 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 goes from there.
You know, I I I understand that. I'm I I I understand, you know, the the. The, you know, this breaks, then that breaks and it and and it just, you know, it happens. My, I I think I'm just asking a very different question and you you're talking about a global failure of the entire wall. And I don't.
Well, left on it, left unattended, left unattended.
Right. Right, right. Right, left under unattended and I'm I'm asking that that's a specific question because everybody has pointed out. And for some of us, we've been here since two thousand fourteen, two thousand six. Been here for a while, so my, and so I I guess my question is if that. And I'm not an engineer, I'm I'm just, you know, logical, I guess. I'm just wondering if if the timbers, the the timbers. I want to get my language again. The oxygen deprived ceased to rot or significantly slow the rot. Was that an alternative at any point? And I'm I'm asking is a serious question because I really, I don't know the answer. But if the depriving that those those railroad ties of oxygen would have stayed off that rot. What what were the alternatives to to now this much more expansive project that's so disruptive?
You're you're, I guess what you're really asking is could these landscape ties be rehabilitated?
I'm, I I guess, can those railroad ties be? Yeah, I I guess the question is, was there consideration given to? Do I want to call it a rehabilitation of the railroad ties? Was there some way to encapsulate, to do exactly depriving the 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 timbers of the oxygen? To cease or significantly slow the rot, but what you said was cease to rot. Is that something that that is an alternative to what's being proposed with this? You know, emptying and silt and 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 drying of silt to find the firm footing and and, you know, the unknowns, you know. You know, you ever know when you like go into your house and you say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fix this bathroom or whatever. And next thing you know, you look at it and you say, well, I gotta go to the next thing. And and sometimes these these projects take on a life of their own. There's no guarantee that this is, I mean, you know. We don't know what happens in in fifty years from now. We won't be here. But I'm just asking, is there some way to have addressed this in a different? Way to to. To, I don't know, I don't know. I guess that's the question. Yes, is there a way to rehabilitate, to encapsulate, to?
Okay, the, okay, the, the, one, the homeowners association. Performed a number of investigations on alternatives. And for example, one was installing helical piers.
What was that? Say that again.
Installing helical, helical piers and steel plates to buttress the railroad tile walls. And then then I asked the one question, well, what happens when you hit the sewer line with the helical piers? So that 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 was discarded. We did, what's unfortunate here.
I'm working.
What's unfortunate here is that. No one has built large scale landscape tile walls like this since the mid nineteen eighties. The modular block walls that we are every familiar with now, Keystone being very well known. Allen Block, Ready Rock, other manufacturers. They were developed in the late eighties and. Really, and and landscape ties, because they have a limited lifespan of typically thirty years. Were simply not constructed. Unfortunately, this project was right at the cusp of when the site industry shifted. From landscape tile walls to modular concrete block walls, which is very unfortunate. The, and yes, the expense and all this, all this prep work, if you were, for example, if if. You're replacing this with, you can get. You can get concrete railroad ties, you can get recycled, uh, plastic. Recycled rubber railroad ties, you, much of this same work we're doing, that prep work, that access work would all be the same. A key element of this is not to disturb this embankment, which encapsulates the sewer line. And part of this is we are creating a massive reinforced embankment to support the existing embankment. So that's all part of this project. Did I, did I explain that well? But absolutely. You know, nobody builds a retaining wall of this magnitude with landscape ties today. Absolutely not.
Yeah, no, no, I I don't, I don't think that's what any, that I was suggesting, nor would I have anticipated that would be even contemplated in your answer. I think I was just wondering if it, if that couldn't be somehow restored and rehabilitated with with less of a a an impact. That's all.
Okay, the.
Given your statement.
Yeah, no, the the, let me, let me. And you really need to, well, let me just pull up the picture again. Again, I think the pictures always help if bear with me here. Okay, the, and that's, that's of course myself, this is this wall. The minute you, this is using your bathroom analogy when you open up a can of worms. The minute you start excavating into this wall system. You're now pulling this bank down on top of yourself. Okay, you're now tripling the the volume of material you're handling. The, it it just complicates, it is. It is best to build a new wall and embankment in front of it to buttress what is there rather than replacing. Because the minute you start and forget about that, right behind it is the sewer line, patios, decks. And then the townhouse units themselves. The minute you start excavating into this embankment. That is a a serious challenge. And keep in mind, we can't, you can't even back up a machine here. You're in the pond. As I, so again, there, we're gonna lower this pond. This Buck and Meyer is gonna be excavated. We're gonna excavate down to firm material. They're gonna start this. A a course of block and this wall is gonna rise up. And then this the twelve foot separation is our travel lane back and forth. And yes, would fourteen feet be better? I made the judgment, twelve foot is the minimal acceptable and is workable. Would fourteen feet be better? Yes. Does that complicate matters with the ponds? Yes, so fourteen, twelve foot was the decision.
So were you saying that you're gonna be able to get a truck? Like, that's gonna be the part of the loop where you're going around?
This is, you know, a Bobcat, a Skid steer or a Bobcat.
What kind of a truck would be needed to rehabilitate the wall? If you can get a Bobcat in there to dig up to backfill in, what would you need? What sort of a truck would be needed in there? I mean lumber, lumber could be delivered elsewhere and settled. But I mean, so what are, what kind of truck would you be suggesting is needed to rehabilitate the wall versus?
I'm not suggesting rehabilitate this wall.
The mayor, the mayor had asked about that and you said it's not possible. He can't even get a truck in there. It's too dangerous. And I understand that I'm understanding the asbestos pipe. I'm understanding the the sanitary sewer sewer line. I'm just saying.
Well, let's, okay, let's just take a a simple example, the. If you. You know, if if you purchased concrete railroad ties and you took this wall apart. And replaced it in kind with concrete railroad ties. While you're taking this wall apart, what's holding up everything behind the wall? It's, you know, this is, this is, to think of these, these are, these are glorified Lincoln Logs. If I, if you start, if you take and, you know, obviously typically you start at the bottom. You have to establish your foundation. So you start taking down these, these railroad, these these landscape ties. And you can replace them with concrete ties, which are made. You could say there are, we are proposing a concrete wall in front, okay? But if you take this apart. And and and, you know, there's me, I'm five nine, here's the wall up here. Okay, if you take this apart, what's holding up all the fill that's behind that wall?
But Tibor, I have another question based on what they're saying. If you said the minimum required from this wall to build a new wall was three feet, why couldn't in this image?
No, what I said was you cannot put compaction equipment within three feet of the face of the wall.
Okay, so so three feet within the face of that wall. Technically, you could build a new wall. If you're gonna drudge this pond anyway. Why can't the trucks drive on the right hand side side of you, right? And the new wall be built there and you backfill it with gravel and everything in order to support potentially moving that current wall? If they're gonna dump gravel anyway, why couldn't the truck drive on the right hand side of you in this picture and not go twelve feet?
You mean, drive out here in the pond?
Well, you're gonna drudge it and get to solid, at solid dirt anyway.
It's gonna be drained either way.
None of the, 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 but we're, we're dredging the minimum to place the wall. That the. We were hoping second phase of a project would subject to many different things, Bergen County Mosquito Commission. The 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 silt out here right now is gonna remain. We would like the option, if the opportunity presents itself, to have an approval to dredge it. But this.
Wait, wait, you're not answering my question. I'm sorry. This is confusing to everybody in this format, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get my question answered. If we can't go within three feet of the wall for equipment and everything like that. Why couldn't in the image that you're sort of showing right now that has a block over it? Why couldn't you drudge this? Why couldn't the trucks drive on the right side of you in this image? Why couldn't you backfill that three and a half or four feet, give you an extra foot? Backfill all of that with gravel or whatnot to support? Once you put in the new concrete to support potentially taking that wall out, so there are no issues down the line.
Okay, what you're suggesting is to dredge the north pond, build a haul road across it.
Well, yeah, from where you're standing, maybe it's your four feet from the wall. So you would need twelve feet from when you're where you were standing to the right.
Okay, to to dredge this north pond and build a haul, okay. There's one handling the dredgings, but which is a significant expense. And there's environmental concerns with the silt potentially, okay? But to build a whole road across this pond, I mean, to open the door on that is a hundred thousand dollars. The.
But you're gonna be moving it back anyway. Another call it for wherever you're standing, call it six or seven feet, you're gonna be dredging it anyway to be able to build what you need to build. Right, so if the concern here and what I'm hearing from the mayor and other board members, if there's a concern. That God forbid something's gonna happen to this, you would only be filling then instead of the proposed twelve feet. You're filling maybe four feet, putting the new wall up, and then why couldn't that potentially come down?
Okay, let me, let me. Try to answer some questions here.
But it is possible to dredge that and drive on it.
If if had, if, okay. If 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 there were no budget limitations. There were absolutely no budget limitations, could we build a haul road across the north pond? Yes.
Not across it, alongside it, where the new wall would be.
Okay.
So alongside it, adjacent to it.
If you build a, yes, okay, but the, okay, that's what's. When we build this wall, that's some of the efficiency in this design, okay? And I'm gonna go to a cross section of the wall, okay? And. And. Okay, this is a cross sectional detail of the wall. Okay, this is the actual Keystone block, which has a batter to it. There's the crush stone behind it. These are the GeoGrid lengths. Okay, which are a key component of the design of these walls from a structural perspective. They keep this, they basically result in a reinforced soil mass. And quite frankly, the, to a certain point, the characteristics of the block becomes as less important than the actual GeoGrid. This is our pond out here. This is our three-on-one slope above the wall. That's could be a split rail fence. We, as we're going to be placing these base cores, the base cores of the wall and like. Okay, we're going to bury at least two or three courses. Here's our crush stone. If this is unsuitable material, we place more crushed stone. The existing walls back here. As we place this fill, that is the haul road. Why build the haul road twice? Why would I build, why would I one build a haul road out in the pond? When I have to place compacted fill behind the wall? So it's an efficient design because the compacted fill, which is a component of the wall, is the haul road to build the wall.
But the amount of fill that you would need to build part of the road versus building up, how many feet tall is that? You said you were seven, six feet standing next to that wall like that. It's a lot less stone and you're saving eight feet for however long the width of that fence is to put some stone down so some trucks can drive on it. Am I missing something? And I might be.
Yeah, I believe, I believe, I believe you are. A critical element of these walls. For example, you could not put the Keystone Wall directly against the face of the landscape tile wall. That wall would fail.
And that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying place it four feet from it.
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not. A, a critical, a critical absolute minimum separation between the two walls is eight feet. Preferably 11 to 12. As a practical matter, you need to move bobcats parallel to this wall. You need 12 feet.
How, how far?
What? Okay, I'm, I'm confused. You told me we needed a minimum of three feet for anything to go on near that wall.
What I said is you cannot put compaction material, compaction equipment within three feet of the back of the wall. You do not want to be driving within three feet of the back of the wall. That's what I said. Do not confuse that.
So in the, in the, the lower wall that's there, what's the closest you could build a new wall to it? Pretend you could drive on the opposite side. What's the closest you could build a wall to the lower wall?
If it's a.
Three.
Sorry?
11 feet. You need to be able to maneuver behind the wall to build it.
You need to be behind the wall.
Well, how long do those GeoGrid things have to be?
It varies, it varies. It's typically, and you can go to the design, the typical length is eight feet. The, the minimum standard typically is 60% of the wall height. It's a function of the soil conditions. The loading on top of the wall. There's many variables. But the, the typical rule of thumb is 60% of the wall height.
Did I understand you to say minimum eight feet, but you needed at least, but you needed more than that?
You need, you need to be able to maneuver.
But you, you.
He said eight, but preferably 11 or 12.
Correct. And my recommendation is 12 feet.
No, no, but.
If, if, if another engineer wants to make a recommendation and be responsible, he's welcome or she. My recommendation is 12 feet.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm, I'm asking a different question. So you stated that minimum is eight feet. But you're more comfortable with, with the wider.
Yes. And the reason for that is I've built these walls. And by the way, we have one, if people are interested in the next two weeks, we have a very similar project going to construction on Mountain Avenue in Mawa. It is uncanned, there's no pond, but it is a very difficult site. With, and it's, it's a 16-foot-high wall. Two tiers, each eight-foot tall. And there's going to be three houses.
Nobody wants to go see it. Can we finish this application? Nobody wants to go see it. I'm sorry. It's, I, this is ridiculous. Let's finish this application.
Look, I'm going to see it.
Sorry, nobody wants to go see it. Let's just finish this.
Okay, no, for, for practical, for practical considerations, okay, if people want to see it, it'll be there. But I am the design engineer. I've not only designed these walls, I've built these walls. And my recommendation is 12-foot.
Okay. The asbestos pipe going through it as well?
Actually, we're putting the sewer line in front of the wall.
That seems like that would have been a good idea 30 years ago.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just Chairman, it's, it's Chris. It's 10:30 now. I think a lot of the board's questions and T-Bor's responses hinge a lot on Chris Rutter Hauser's analysis. And that will, that will, that will take a while. My suggestion is if we break now, I would ask Mr. Rutherford to address, I know he doesn't have to, but I think Mr. Rutherford and I both as board attorneys in different communities, think fairness is important. So Ms. Wondergem has a number of emails that he can review and at least be prepared to address. Ms. Wondergem can send out the link to the next meeting to the people who may or may not have been able to get linked up this time to Zoom. And they must realize that they have to participate in that venue. They just can't email stuff, even if Mr. Rutherford is being courteous. And then there's less planning on this application than engineering. But we still have to hear from our planner. Then we have to hear from the public in terms of their questions. Then we have to hear from the public as the comments. And potentially if anybody wants to produce testimony. So I, I think it might be a good time to carry chair.
So I have a, I have a question though first. Sorry, it's late and I, I don't, I, I think I understood you, Chris, to say that the emails that I forwarded to Jane would go to Mr. Rutherford for his review. And, and so they could address those concerns. Did I understand that correctly?
That would be my suggestion to my, my brother at the bar. However, I think it's imperative that the people understand that they just can't do that. And at a next meeting, Jane at least knows who submitted the names. They can, they can have the link to the next meeting emailed to them. And if they choose to participate, great, that's, that's what we want. If they choose not to, at least they'll be on notice that their comments are not going to be considered by the board.
So I, I, I'm going to take issue with this because if the emails that we forwarded or I, that came to me and I, I perused them and took them and sent them immediately to Jane and copied you and to Richard so that I didn't, I didn't really read them. If they're now going to be reviewed and addressed outside of the purview of this board, I am now concerned about that. If it's not going to be in this public meeting, then I don't think anybody should be, we're not sending them to get to the board members. I think that those emails and the public needs to be heard because questions, we get questions. And sometimes the, the questions that are being posed by the public really result in other questions by board members. So I take exception with the idea that email questions and comments would be forwarded to an applicant for those issues to be addressed because those issues might ultimately be of concern to us.
Mayor, I, I, I agree with you. That would have been a courtesy if Mr. Rutherford chose to do it. However, in terms of fully vetting the issue like you're doing tonight with the board and having the ability for individuals to question, I'll step back and I'll say Ms. Wondergem should at least notify them in the next meeting. At least we have individuals that now are aware that they want to have some comment. And they could be provided with the link to the communication to the next meeting. And if they so choose to attend and ask questions or be participants, that's fine. And if not, the board will not consider their, their, their inquiries.
Yeah, and I just think it keeps the public hearing aspect of this clean.
That is fine. It would have been a courtesy at best.
I appreciate that, Mr. Martin. Thank you. I will admit, I can't have it both ways. You know, at the beginning of the hearing, I kind of agreed with your analysis that those items were not part of the record would, I'd be happy to see them to have an opportunity to respond to them, sure. But, but no, I, I appreciate that very much. But I think, yeah, we'll just leave it that way. If interest, I mean, this has been very rigorously, you know, examined, you know, by the board and certainly I know by, by interested parties at the upcoming meeting. So I doubt there's going to be too many surprises, most respectfully, but we'll see. So that, that's fine. I'm happy to leave it that way, just as you had discussed earlier at the, at the, earlier in the meeting. But thank you.
No, thank you, David. And then the board secretary will just simply email these individuals. And it'll, it'll be posted anyhow that they could see it. But since they made an inquiry, I think it was respectful that they can have an email as to the link is in a location for the next meeting. As you know, Mr. Rutherford, this is interesting in terms of a legal position from a, from a expert engineering standpoint. And a lot of the matter turns on that. So I think a lot has to do with Mr. Rutter Hauser's analysis as well. So in that, more questions will be to your engineer, but we will have to hear the testimony of Mr. Rutter Hauser as well.
Yes, so I would expect at the next meeting, then, if there are further board questions of Mr. Latincich, we'll address them. And then I assume the board would then give interested parties an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Latincich as well. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct. As to the public, before we get to the board witnesses.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, Dave, you're available for the next meeting for November?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, 17.
Yes.
Excuse me. Yes. We do have another hearing on November 17.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to try to put, you know, I think this is going to need a whole meeting.
It would be nice if this was the only thing. Like, we didn't even have ordinances or anything because we didn't even start this. And then with, you know, getting technical stuff sorted, and this is really difficult, definitely. It's confusing for everybody, but so it would be nice if, if we had not, nothing.
So is, could, could we move it to December 1st? Not November 17 then?
Dave, would you be okay with December 1st?
Yes, I'm, I am certainly, yes. And I believe, Mr. Latincich, just can you confirm your availability?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to carry this matter to December 1st meeting without further notice and without prejudice to the.
Is there, Dylan, is there a way to shut off the commenting? Because I find it so beyond rude to have to be in, you know, we're, we're doing this as volunteers, but to have to read the comments that are so rude from the public that we're here to help, we're trying to help, we're listening to this application, we're trying to devote our attention to it. And the snippy rude comments are so offensive. Is there any way to shut them off? I can't, I find it so beyond rude.
I can only shut off the questions and answers, but I can't shut off the comments.
Well, then I hope whoever it is that feels the need to write those comments, we're doing this as volunteers and I just hope that the public is aware. We're trying to devote as much of our time and attention with jobs and families and we know it's election day and there are plenty of things. I find the comments to be beyond rude.
Okay.
Sorry, I just think that I wish there was a way to shut them off.
That's okay. I mean, the board's just instructed not to look at the comments.
I mean, if they pop up on the screen, I don't know how to shut them off. Maybe I need a little.
Yeah, you can minimize the window. You can close it down. You can go on Zoom and.
I'll figure it out. I just, I find it very, very rude.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, you might find it rude. I know people are concerned.
I understand. I tend to always be somebody that speaks up at these meetings, asking how residents can have more of a voice in these meetings. I do it when we're live in public and I do it when we're here on Zoom. But to just act like we're, you know, wasting time for the fun of it, I, I just find it ridiculous. I, I do have it minimized, just so we're clear. I, it is, anyway, I'll check. I'll look into my settings.
Okay.
And I'll mute myself now.
Anything else, Dave, on it? We're okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I think you were pretty clear, but just so the public knows, they're not going to get any more notice than what we just announced. And on December 1st at 7:30, the meeting will commence with this, you know, with some very minimal business and then this application. So they should be aware to look at the website for the village and be prepared that the hearing will happen on December 1st with no further, you know, mailings or anything or notice in the newspaper.
And the intentions to have T-Bor maybe testify a little bit more. There'll be more questions. And then I expect to have board professionals ask questions and then the public can ask questions. So it'll pertain to T-Bor's testimony. You can't just bring anything and everything, but mainly pertaining to his testimony, you can ask.
They'll have a time for anything and everything at the end.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Dave.
Very much. Good evening. Thank you, board.
Thank you, T-Bor.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next item. It'll be adoption of minutes. And the minutes we have are October 6th and October 20th. We'll handle October 6th first. And whoever was present at that meeting is eligible to vote.
Was that the one that I left? I got six.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I can't vote on those. Okay.
That was this one, the beginning of this one.
Right, okay. Let me try.
Lucky.
I saw one typo where it says on the second page, it says adoption of minutes. If you go up to the paragraph, I think it's additional exhibits with an S.
Okay.
There was one other typo, I think, on this one. Was this the one where in, sorry, it's not opening, in the committee when Fran was talking about the blood subdivision? It should be blood instead of flood.
Ms. O'Brien is welcome back to the dais now. She's no longer with you.
You recused and you came back.
With her red pen.
Oh, I've been watching.
Data wake.
No, I think their name is Blood.
It is Blood, but it says.
It is Blood, but I wrote Flood. Okay. Got it. What's the name? It's Blood, not Flood.
It's Blood, not Flood.
It should be Blood. Diane say it was. I thought Diane said it was Blood, not Flood.
I'll yell at you next.
I think it says Blood, but it should be.
I won't yell at you. I won't.
All right, do we have a motion to accept it with the revisions?
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, call the roll.
Okay, Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Huguen?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're approved. All right, the next minutes are the October 20th minutes. Those that were present are eligible to vote on these. Any comments? Any motion to approve that's written?
Motion. There's one little T typo under public comments under Bridges. It should be for questions or for the council with an S. Otherwise, I'll second it.
Dylan, it's a seconded.
Ellen, he's got to go to bed.
I, I don't, I don't sleep. You know, I don't sleep, but.
All right, so motion and a second.
You made the motion?
Yes.
Yep.
Seconded?
I did.
Diane.
Okay.
All right, call the roll.
Okay, Mayor Newtonson?
Yes.
Chief Gore?
Yes.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Huguen?
Yes.
Ms. Patier? Ms. Piteri?
Yes.
Ms. Westner?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Darling, muted, okay.
Okay.
She herself.
Okay, those are approved. Do we have any other business executive session required, Chris?
Not required.
Anybody want to go to Mawa? No?
Any other business to discuss, anyone? Motion to conclude?
I, I move.
A second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're concluded. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good job.
Okay.
Thanks, Dylan, you guys.
Take care, everybody.